Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, August 15th, 2017, and it is 6:30 PM. If I could remind everyone, if they haven't done so already, to silence your cellphones. We are reconvening from a closed session that we began at 6 o'clock. Could you have a report of any action?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda conference with labor negotiators for the Lompoc Police Officers Association. Staff gave a report to council, and there is a discussion took place, but no reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. If we can get everyone to stand, remove your hats if you have them on, and join Pastor Bernie Federman in the invocation.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Okay, on July 19th, I presented a proclamation to Bob Campbell and Kay Casey for Lompoc Valley Man and Woman of the Year. Now I'd like to do a presentation. This is a present-- it's a proclamation honoring or congratulating Saint Mary's Episcopal Church for their 125th anniversary. Okay, so this is a proclamation from the City of Lompoc celebrating Saint Mary's Church on its 125th anniversary. Whereas Saint Mary's Episcopal Church was established in Lompoc in 1892, the fourth church in the community, and whereas Saint Mary's congregation has continued to support one another and serve the larger Lompoc community through its ministry and outreach over the past 125 years, and whereas Saint Mary's has continued to support outreach programs to help feed the homeless, provide backpacks, and school supplies, and clothes to children, the Good Samaritan Bridge House, the Marx House, Domestic Violence Solutions, Communities Partners in Caring, Transitions Mental Health, Valley Haven, Senior Nutrition Programs, Meals on Wheels, Catholic Charities, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, Alcoholics Anonymous, and Al-Anon, and the Red Shirt Project. And whereas Saint Mary's has participated in the Flower Festival and supported the Queen Candidates, whereas Saint Mary's has provided numerous Men and Women of the Year, City Council Members, and its current Mayor to the City of Lompoc, and whereas Saint Mary's is committed to continue this heritage in Lompoc and continue the work that has with its hands on the plow. And now therefore, we hereby congratulate the parish and welcome the past and continued contributions to the parish makes to this community. I, Saint Mary's Episcopal Church, celebrate its 125th year. And this is witnessed by my hand on this day, it was actually yesterday, the 13th, or two days ago on the 13th. So congratulations.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
We also presented that at the services on Sunday to the congregation, so they had their little birthday party. It was a nice event. Okay, City Managers, oops, wait a minute. We have Lompoc Central Safety Committee will present Above and Beyond Awards.
Mayor, Council, Staff, and Citizens, it is my honor as the Chair of the City of Lompoc Central Safety Committee to present the fourth quarter Above and Beyond Awards. Nominations are made by peers for activities that are viewed as above and beyond the requirements of the job. First was Lisa Kessler from Utility Billing. She is recognized for her kind and professional manner when dealing with customers that are irate and verbally abusive. She patiently works with them to understand their options for payment. She is patient and helpful, which creates a nice work and office environment. Next was Jasmine McGinty from Economic and Community Development. She's recognized for her promotion of a healthy and active workplace environment by encouraging staff to get out and walk during their 15-minute breaks. Rain or shine, Jasmine is out walking, making the office a better place one step at a time. Next was Tracy Tripp from Urban Forestry. She-- he was recognized for his extra effort to trim the shrubs that are in the corporate yard parking lot, so that when they would-- they would not scratch cars when they were moved by the wind. This activity reduced the potential claims for paint damage to vehicles parked in the parking lot. And lastly was Gustavo Lopez and Ernesto Lemus Jr. from Streets. They were recognized for their aid to a city motorist. While returning to the corporate yard, they noticed a motorist stalled at the corner of Laurel and R Street. They initiated a traffic control with their vehicles and then moved the vehicle out of the street with the help of two other citizens.
Let's see, City Managers' report.
Nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Public comment on the consent calendar. There's three minutes to speak to us. Anything on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar, bring it back to the council. Consent calendar consists of things that are generally considered routine and will be passed with one motion unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member wish to pull an item? Councilmember Mosby.
Might not need to pull just some questions about the-- quick questions about the item number three.
Okay. Why don't we try to get some answers? Who'd like to handle that?
Our library director is here, so she's probably going to be the person most knowledgeable to answer your questions.
Hi.
Hello. Just a quick question. It's-- I know we have a contract with the county, and it states in here that we wouldn't be able, if we signed this, to modify the contract either through staffing levels or hours of operation, and I'm wondering if that potentially ties our hands with our budget discussions that we currently have.
I'm not sure.
That may be a legal opinion. I think you're-- I don't know, you want to tackle that? Ms. Blad, do you know how soon? Is this time sensitive?
Yes, it is. It's supposed to go to the Board of Supervisors next Tuesday on the 22nd.
If it's possible, I think this-- that you've asked a question that's a legal question, so I'd like to give the City Attorney an opportunity to review that portion of it in a little more detail. Perhaps we can report back later in the meeting.
Yeah, sure.
So, Councilmember Mosby, would you like to just pull this and have-- okay, so we'll pull this item for discussion later.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? No?
That's it, library. I just had one other thing I don't think I can take in a vote. There's a-- I think a check made up to myself for a refund for the election. I think there's one for also for Ms. Osborne and well for the mayor, so I don't believe on the voucher registers.
You don't have to take a vote, it's just disclosed.
Just disclose that they are there.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve with the exception of number three.
I'll move.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? That passes 5-0. Okay, so item number three will be discussed later in the-- on the agenda just prior to the last oral communication. Okay, now we'll go to oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything that can come before this council.
Fantastic. Hello, City Council Members. Mayor, my name is Hatziba Sanval. I may not be a resident of Lompoc, but Lompoc has a special part in my heart. I have many family from here, and I have friends from here. I practically grew up here. I work for Batters Intervention here in the City of Lompoc, and the City of Lompoc really needs to consider adopting district elections. You've been notified, and you have it on your table, so I want you to know that there's benefit to district elections. Ever since the City of Long Beach has adopted district elections, it has diversified their city council in ways you would never imagine. Why do people tend to-- why is it that city councils end up being more diverse? It's because they're districts, so you end up knowing who you're voting for, and you're more held accountable for that district. No city has never not-- hasn't benefited from districts. I'm not asking you to just do it right now. I'm asking it to be a discussion. Put it on so that you can actually make a special meeting and let the community come here and talk about this. It needs to be discussed. You know, Santa Barbara just went in-- Santa Barbara went into district elections, and because of it, there's been more turnout in Latinos than there has been in the Mesa, and that's saying a lot. Now, this is a Latino-based issue, but it also diversifies in other minority groups. It helps get more women involved, it helps more get more youth involved in government, and it's a wonderful thing that we should all consider and we should all bring to the table and talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, my name is Juan Cruz, and I have a real simple question. When I moved here from Texas, I was looking forward for the great weather, and we have great weather here. So my question was, when I got here, I noticed there were no good soccer fields. Now, the point of bringing the soccer field is that, one, is that young kids can play, right? Teenagers can play, and adults can play. So that gives time for the family to be together, especially in a small town where entertainment is limited, and soccer could provide a place for the whole family to get together, not only a weekend. It could be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, three times, three to four times a week to participate in some exercise for the family, for everyone to enjoy. Like I said, back in Texas, we're a relevant college station. We had soccer leagues for the little kids, and again, the teenagers, and old people like me. So I was wondering why is it that we don't have adequate soccer fields here? I know we have one, couple of soccer fields at, I think it's a river park, and there're holes everywhere. So that's the question I had, and if it's possible, if you can see to funding a soccer field. And like I said, it benefits everyone, especially for the family, for us to be together and spend time, quality time, and at the same time, exercise. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, sir, and just to let you know, you'll not get any adverse objections from anyone here on the council. We'd love to have more soccer fields here. It's a-- it is a matter of money right now, but we appreciate your comments, and we'll continue to work, do whatever we can for those soccer fields. Okay, sir. Thank you.
My name is Lynn McGill, and I am the Crossing Guard at Cypress and A Street near Hapgood Elementary School. Drivers in the area pay no attention to the 30 mile per hour speed limit on A Street or the stop sign at the corner of Cypress and A because they know there is no police present in the area whatsoever. I have drivers going 50 or 60 miles per hour on A Street, drivers going through stop signs, and going through the crosswalk when I am in it crossing children. I realize the Lompoc Police Department is short-staffed, but I am requesting a policeman with a speed gun one hour a day, one day a month, which I feel will help the situation, if he comes on a different day each month, and which I feel is not an excessive request. Even if I no longer have a job at this location, I feel police presence is absolutely necessary to stop these illegal acts. After all, council members, these are your children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren who are in danger from these illegal drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Sarah Salcedo, and I am a resident in the City of Lompoc. My grandmother and my family, we've lived here for 10-plus years. It's where we call home. The shooting that took place on 4th of July took place right outside my grandmother's residence. I'm here to address that I-- with proper representation, I feel the community can use district elections. And this isn't simply just to get Latinos into office. This is about allowing all protected citizens the opportunity to run viable campaigns within the neighborhoods. People will get involved, and they'll feel more-- they'll feel more comfortable with district elections and their voices being heard. In Galida, they created a community engagement commission that would have the power to advise council on the formation of the district elections structure. Council worried that they-- that if they had a five-seat commission, it would be difficult to fill. The Galida District Election Committee advocated for a seven-seat commission. The last day to apply was July 30th. They now have to interview candidates of vast diversities of the people that choose to apply for this commission. I do feel that the City of Lompoc would benefit from district elections. There's a lot of people that have something to say that just aren't being heard, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
I'm Russ Kingsley with Lompoc Youth Football. I had some pictures I sent in. Charles said they'd be thrown up on the monitor. I don't know if anybody knows about that.
Is this early of Ryan Park?
Yes.
Okay.
Start his clock over again at this point. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is Ryan Park approximately four days ago, and we have opening ceremonies this weekend, which we knew it wasn't going to be ready, but it was-- we were told it would be ready for next week in our first home games. If you could scroll through some of the pictures, you can see the divots and the ruts that the tractor lawnmower rutted into the field because they tried to mow it when it was obviously too wet, and it was approximately 12 to 14 inches tall. It should have been mowed sooner, and there would have been less moisture in the ground. If you can scroll a couple more forward. And I mean, those ruts are three to four inches deep, you know, and this is after last year, they did re-sawed it twice. The first time, they just threw the saw down. The second time, they scraped it, prepped it, and then put sawed in. I mean, you can see, that's after the mower went over it, and you can see right there on the upper right how tall the grass was before they tried to mow it. I think I have some pictures in there now where they tried to fill the ruts, and now that area is all dead because they just threw top soil amendment on top of it and stopped the watering. I don't know if Charles got those into you in time. Okay, but I'm just here because every year this happens with football. I realize the guys are busy. It was fenced off this year to keep the dog show people off, but it was like forgotten about, and the grass was literally 12 to 14 inches tall before they tried to mow it. They obviously didn't even walk it first, and the mower sank. And now it's filled in, but all those spots are now dead. And I don't know, it just seems like this is a reoccurring issue with that field, and a little more attentiveness, I think, would help.
Okay, we'll take a look at that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm Augustin Arias, President of Lompoc Police Office Association, Lompoc resident. Represent the Lompoc Police Office Association, pretty much just here to let you know where we're at. Currently, about 34 officers, with about five with applications at other agencies. I told you it was going to get to this point where you're going to start losing your real talent, guys with 10 years on, 11 years on. Well, that's happening now. We all know the cause of it. Something needs to be done. It's pretty drastic, two to three of the issues. I don't necessarily agree with district elections. The shooting is a result of gang violence, which we currently don't have the staffing to employ a full-time team, doing patchwork doesn't work. Traffic, don't have any traffic because you don't have enough officers. And pretty much, you're at a pretty drastic state right now. The frustration level is about to boil over, is boiling over. You got people ready to jump off. And call it whatever you want to call it, call it whatever. We need to fix it. We need to work together, and not this, oh, one, he said, she said, or point fingers, or-- I've saw the budget myself. There's a lot of money being allocated in other places that aren't going to protect your citizens. A lot of money. And we could talk in private, I'm not going to come up here and just blast any departments, but there's a lot of irresponsible budgeting in the next two years. It was done at other departments, not my own. And that's probably where you find the correction to fix our problems, because public safety should be the most important thing. And I'm just here pretty much at my wit's end. I've been here 18 years, planning on staying for the next 10 and then be a happily retired person, but, you know, reconsidering work environment and mental health and physical health and stuff like that, I mean, you try to do the job of 10 people with four people. What kind of work product do you produce? I know my guys produce the best work product countywide. All of us do here. That's what you have, or what you had, because it soon will be what you had. Something needs to be done, something needs to be done pretty quick, because you're losing all your best talent. So listen to their issues, and what's the root of it? Not having enough of people that work for us. So, thank you. Hopefully, something will get worked out.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Erica Cortez. I've been here for over six years with my family and children, and my kids go here in the-- at the school here is in Lompoc. I believe that Lompoc City would benefit from district elections because there's a lot of issues that need to be talked about, and I believe that Latinos here haven't been represented like they should be. Over 54% of the Lompoc community is here, and I believe that you guys would benefit from district elections here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mayor Lingel, members of the council, thank you for your service to our community. My name's Lanny Ebenstein. I'm a longtime participant in Santa Barbara County issues, usually on the southern Santa Barbara County, but also on northern county issues, particularly in the area of public infrastructure. And the infrastructure that I want to talk to you about tonight is social infrastructure, and in particular, the benefits of district elections. District elections are sweeping the state of California right now, literally within Santa Barbara County. The City of Santa Barbara, the City of Santa Maria, the City of Galida, and just last night, the City of Carpinteria have all voted to implement district elections as a result of the California Voting Rights Act. And I think that, as some of the other speakers have indicated, district elections really are good for the whole community. It's something that it results in greater representation, and at the same time, that means representation of different views, different perspectives, and something that is always positive, to make sure that everyone is represented on the city council, whether you're a Democrat or you're a Republican, as I am, or whatever your philosophical perspective is. It's something that diversity and lots of views on the council from diverse backgrounds is positive. I myself am a past elected official. I served on the Santa Barbara Board of Education for eight years. And so I think that this is something that can be a really positive trend that Lompoc joins in. My family formerly owned property in northern Santa Barbara County, and through organizations that I was involved with as a youth, I've spent much time in Lompoc and Santa Maria. And I believe that if you look at the experience of cities that have implemented district elections, it's always been favorable in terms of before the case, they may have had some concerns or trepidations as to how it would work, but after it was implemented across the board, from the right and from the left, it's been perceived as something that's advantageous for everybody because it means that members of the council become even more knowledgeable and more of an expert in particular areas of the community. And, you know, when we look at the County of Santa Barbara, for example, it's run on a district basis, and that's good because that means there's representation for North County on the Board of Supervisors. And if there weren't a large circumstance in Santa Barbara County, that probably wouldn't be the case. So, thank you again for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to address these comments.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close our oral communication, and we're going to go-- And we're going to go on to new business. This is item number five. It's looking at approving a cooperative agreement with Santa Barbara County Association of Governments.
Good evening. Mike Luther, City Engineer. This is an, an agreement that's required. Back in 2015, this engineering department applied for some competitive grants through the pedestrian bicycle program of Measure A. We awarded those grants. And as part of that, in order to move forward with those projects, we need to sign a cooperative agreement with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. So that's why I'm here tonight, is to ask for you to approve that item.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Luther? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. Item number five. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, move on to item number six. Item number six is introduction of first reading of title-only ordinance, number of amending prohibitions on restrictions on the water, on the use of water. This is Segovia.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to discuss amendment of the no-water waste restrictions. On January 17th, 2014, the governor declared a water emergency. This year, water year 2017 changed dramatically. Most of California began to emerge from a drought. We had record rainfalls this year. And on April 7th of this year, the governor actually ended the drought in most of California. There's still about four state, excuse me, four counties that are in a severe situation. We are not one of them. The governor did modify California's no-water waste restrictions built on other restrictions in the past from Executive Order 3716 and previous orders. The governor's restrictions do require some changes to the Lompoc City Code. It's Section 13.04.060, prohibitions and restrictions on the use of water. The governor also rescinded two emergency proclamations from January and April 2014 and four other drought-related executive orders. The city's no-water waste restrictions are in the Lompoc Code, Section 13.04.060. They were first adopted, we've had conservation a long time, since 1990. And they've been amended as the state requirements change. Staff recommends amending Section 13.04.060 in response to these executive orders, B4017 and B3716. The first one would be cancellation of the two-day-per-week watering restriction. And that would allow residents to set their own schedule. The days that we've restricted right now are Wednesday and Saturday, so those would be gone. Cancellation on the restriction and any type of food or drink businesses from customers automatically, from serving water without a customer request. Also, the addition of the prohibition of the use of potable water for outdoor landscapes during and within 48 hours of a measurable rainfall. The addition of the prohibition on the use of potable water in a fountain or other decorative water feature unless the water is part of a recirculating system. Also, within our code, within the Lompoc Regional Wastewater Reclamation Plant, we do require recycled water for dust control and compaction during construction. However, at this time, we're working diligently, but we do not have a permit for recycled water. So our request is to amend this section, 13.04.060A6, to allow customers to use potable water unless recycled water is available. On May 8th, 2017, we did discuss these restrictions and amendments with the Utility Commission, and they supported the following amendments to the code. Cancellation of the two-day-a-week watering restriction. Cancellation of a restriction on serving water without request. And also amending the section of the code concerning requiring recycled water unless the recycled water is available for development. No recommendation was made on any type of prohibited use of potable water for outdoor landscapes within 48 hours of measurable rainfall. Adoption of Ordinance Number 1636, Pren 17, is a benefit to the city and does not have a negative fiscal impact on the city or the city's general fund. There will be processing time for staff. We currently, I want to make sure we still have to enforce the remaining no-water waste restrictions. They are part of California, and the governor's made them a way of life, and we do support them. It certainly helped our community. So there will be staff time, and we still have to report to the state. Any staff time for these costs will be paid for by revenue from the water rates. The city received quite a bit of rain this year, about 22.13 inches of rain. And we're recommending the changes in response to the governor's changes. Staff reviewed the governor's changes to the no-water waste restriction, the existing requirements, and the present status of the Lompoc Regional Wastewater Reclamation Plant, and found the recommended changes appropriate for the city. Staff recommends the following. That the city council introduce by first reading of title only with further reading waived Ordinance Number 1636, Pren 17, amending subdivision 13.04.060A of the Lompoc Municipal Code concerning the prohibitions and restrictions on the use of water. And that's Attachment 1. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Segovia? Good job. I just figured out now how to set my timers and I don't have to worry about it anymore.
Pardon me?
I just figured out how to set my timers. Now I don't have to worry about it anymore.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll open this up for public comment.
John Lynn, Vice Chairman of the, of the Utility Commission. Just so the council knows, the last two items on this, we didn't discuss, they weren't brought to us. So now I'm going to speak personally rather than on behalf of the commission, because we haven't discussed it. I think number seven is probably way more legislation than we need. I think the estimate is that it rains 25 times a year here in some amount. Most of them very small. I can't imagine that people with sprinklers are going to go out 25 times a year and turn their system on and off. Some of those rainfalls are so small that they're diminuous, and they wouldn't water your lawn in the first place. I appreciate the desire to save water, but I think that's an individual effort. So I would ask you, from my standpoint, to take off item seven, or return items six and seven, if you prefer, to us for discussion and pass the other items this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council.
Mayor and council members, I just wanted to mention, number seven that John Lynn is talking about is a requirement from the state. That's the only reason that we added that in terms of measurable rainfall. We did not have it before, but it is a requirement.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Moesby.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and discussion. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay. Okay, going on to item number seven. Just first reading title only of ordinance number 1637, Pren C17, amending the chapter 360 of the Lompoc Municipal Code related to purchasing policies and procedures. Okay, it doesn't look like Mr. Amber, but I'll...
I'm not Mr. Amber. I'm, I'm here on his behalf. Ray is here, the purchasing and materials manager is here. Ray has been working on this revision for quite some time. And one of the reasons why we're bringing it today instead of later is to be able to coordinate these changes with a new finance system so that the procurement process can be consistent across all of the various types of procurements we have. So that just kind of gives a little bit of background that's not really in here, but it, it's one of the decisions we made about doing this because I've been the holdup on getting this... I'm done. So he's actually been working on this since very soon after the state made their legislation changes to the Uniform Construction Code back in 2011. That's the last time that they made changes to the procurement levels that are subject to formal and informal bidding. We've continued to use our lower levels for both public and public projects that are subject to this code, as well as our own, to keep everything consistent. So even though the code allows for $175,000 limits on construction projects that are considered public, we still have the $125,000 limit right now. So this would change that in two ways. It would increase the limits to agree with what the state legislation did in 2011. The state typically changes their limits, or reviews the limits at least every five years. So we kind of expect to see another change by the state within the next year or two. And so the second change that was made was to allow our code to mirror what the Construction Act provides. So we don't have to go through this particular exercise just for that one item to change the public procurement limits that are for the, the three limits, the three levels that they have in their system. Our code would, from here on out, mirror that. So if they make any changes up or down, our code would change up and down at the same time. The, another thing that came up in this timeframe is we've had a couple of exercises. We've had the Migalito Fire, and we've had a few exercises here to look at potential emergencies. The FEMA has put out guidelines about purchasing guidelines in relation to emergencies that would increase our chances of making sure we get reimbursed by FEMA in the case there's an emergency. So that was one whole new section that was added to the code to allow us to follow those rules and regulations that FEMA has put out. A third item that was changed was simply the consolidation of one code section 3.4 with the rest of the purchasing code in 3.36, which just consolidated it all together. And finally, the, what I tried to do is make the code within the purchasing code section a little bit more readable. I brought all the, I suggested that we bring all the definitions to the front so that they're there for every section in case, in the past, they were kind of spread out throughout each of the sections. And a lot of housekeeping, changing some titles and things like that. So I'm not going to go into great detail, but obviously there was quite a number of pages that are part of this ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer questions if...
Any questions for Mr. Wilkie? Councilor Moesby.
Basically, what you're asking is to keep up with the inflationary aspects, which I assume that's why the limit goes up and down?
That's, I, I can't guess what the commission that is at the state that does, but that generally is looking at it from the point of view of efficiencies. If you have a formal procurement process goes, goes through, and I listed them out in the staff report, all these various levels of what we have to do, it extends the timeline for getting some projects done that could be done just as easily and with just as many cost controls at the lower levels. And I think that's what they were trying to do is allow for more projects to occur that were in the $175,000 limit as opposed to the $125,000 limit. So that could also be just as valid as that they're just looking at it from, in five years, that's just how much it went up to get the same level of product.
And it does mention that the purchasing agent can delegate the responsibilities to the Public Works or the Utility Director, and I assume they're good with what you got at here.
That's exactly how we're doing it now. So it, it allows Public Works to do the whole procurement process for a road project, for instance. That's how we are doing it now, and that will hopefully continue because it, it's a good working relationship between purchasing and the Public Works Department. And Public Works basically coordinates anything that utilities is doing on a large capital project anyway. So that, that doesn't change. That's not planning to be changed anytime soon.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Open this up for public comment. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Wrong button.
I'll move to read introduction, first reading title only for ordinance number 163717.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and discussion. Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, now we're going to go to unfinished businesses, which is a continued discussion of our budget. This can be a long item, so I'm going to recommend we take a, like a five-minute break. And we'll be back in a couple minutes. What was that, Dirk? How was that?
I've got to go now.
Oh.[1649.13]
I've got to go now.
Oh.
Things about the analysis too is how steady the expenses have been in that department year after year. So it's not a matter of, well, this is, we have a, you know, like was suggested, well, maybe we have a spending problem. We don't. There is a fluctuating income, but the expense side of that is fairly consistent. I got, I'm not sure if, on discussions, for instance, about elimination of the Economic Development Department, that we've had such great increases in our economic growth locally. I don't think it's by accident or coincidence that we locally put out that level of effort and then were able to locally hit our all-time highs and outpace the growth rates, both for California and then most recently for the rest of the Santa Barbara County. So there's always, I don't think there's anything bad about asking the questions that were asked. I think they're, it was asked in a way to examine what those possibilities are, and I think it's important to read and understand the entire response for us to be fully responsive to what we were asked. So with that, that's sort of my general overview. And I realize, again, you individually and collectively have not had a chance to review this. It's a pretty good packet of information. If you'd like to, if you'd like to, I can walk through and I'd be happy to do a reading.
Okay.
Or, up to you.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I think it's difficult to absorb any of this, you know, getting a staff report, you know, seconds before we, the item comes up. It makes it, you know, very difficult and, you know, I'm not prepared really to ask much any questions, so it's just going to be, you know, your side and not really coming back from us. I don't think it's an appropriate time to totally diagram and go through this again. You hit some of the highlights on here, which, and I appreciate the thoroughness of the report, and I would like to go through it. I don't, it could be almost, I don't want to say a waste of time, but I think it would be better done if we had time to absorb it first.
I don't disagree with that.
Councilmember Vega.
Patrick, I also agree with Councilman Mosby that it's going to be hard for us to absorb it, and you going line by line, I think it's going to be a watered-down effect unless we absorb or know what we're talking about. So I'd either have to ask that, either we have a special meeting to go and, just for this purpose, and we call a special meeting here within, you know, in a short time. I'm not sure how long it's going to take everybody to absorb these numbers, but I think we come back with some clear direction. I think you were asked to provide an analysis of what could be or where we could go, and I think it's going to be up to the council to come back with some clear direction, so there's no throwing it back and forth, I think. I appreciate the fact that you came back with all this information, but I'm going to ask the council, hey, do we want to have a special meeting here shortly, soon, or do we want to just dedicate it to this, the response to this? This is really important. So that's my question to the rest of the council, okay? Do we call a special meeting for this, or do we? I think that timeframe-wise, we had this thing pushed off to the end of August. I think it's up to us to get this thing done. So I would kind of push us to, let's try and make this happen here, otherwise we're going to end up doing an extension as far as for our budget.
I can, I can give my point of view on that. You know, we have, we have a special meeting scheduled for this exact purpose right following this meeting. There's a special meeting to, if we so desire, to extend our deadline for another month until the end of September. So that is one option, as opposed to rushing into a special meeting, but.
Yeah. No, I think that's a good idea, that we look at the option. I never did like being pushed toward the deadline, but I'd like us to do, be conscious that every time we extend this, we seem to come up with some new angles here, which I'd like us to keep away from the starting over each time, so I'd like us to seriously take this seriously. I think everybody else is watching us, and I think we owe city staff, and I think we owe the public to get this thing done and put some clear direction out there. I think that's what we're here for. We're not here to go beat around the bush and go play tug-of-war. I think we're up here to create policy, and we also are here to provide some oversight and protect the people that put us in this office. We do owe ourselves, owe everybody else at fiduciary to keep City Hall running, but this is just another direction. So I'm going to say, I think probably it's a good idea, Mr. Mayor. You know what I mean for that?
Okay, well, we can't discuss it that now.
Okay.
There'll be a special meeting, if we so choose, there'll be a special meeting immediately following this.
So we can actually schedule another special meeting? Can I make that request now?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
You can make that request now. The special meeting that's scheduled for after this meeting is just if we wanted to adopt the extension of the time limit to adopt the budget. So you could.
Okay, gotcha.
Decide to have another special meeting in a week or whenever, right now, and then we wouldn't even have to have the special meeting after the regular meeting today, because we can just take that resolution to the special meeting that we call.
So, okay, so I'd like to make that motion, unless somebody else wants to make that motion, that we have a special meeting. I'm not sure how much time we would need, but I think it deserves our attention and that we dedicate ourselves to study this material, and how soon can we come back here and feel like we can actually vet this?
You know, I'd like to make my comment, and I will support that motion for you afterward if you wanted to make it again.
Okay.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Like, I think we are all going to agree here, we've got 26 pages of very in-depth, a couple of days of easy studying to look at here. I'm sure that some members of this council are not going to agree with what's in here or what it's for, but it's one of the things that was asked for and looked at. Public review on this, I think, is important. Nobody in the public has 26 pages in their hands. All for the special meeting, what I'm finding ironic about this is the fact that we've scheduled a marijuana meeting before we did a budget meeting, and now we have a resolution to extend the budget. I'd go ahead right now, and I'd like to just go ahead and make the motion that we adopt Resolution Number 6132 (17), and then we could discuss a special meeting time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Unfortunately, that can't happen right now. The reason that we had to put out a special meeting agenda is so that that resolution would be on that agenda. So if we're going to extend to September 30th, we have to do that at the special meeting, which will be immediately after this meeting.
Understood.
So, can I get back to what I was saying?
Sure.
Under that motion that I did propose, it was a special meeting, and I do want to make that motion, okay, that we do, we do it by next Tuesday, or do we need more than a couple of days? I think that would be something that we need to come to a meeting of the minds here. I think probably no more than a week do we need, or do we need more than that? I think within a week, I think we should be able to do that. So whether it's next Tuesday, next Monday, I think we need to come up with something there so we can.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The city manager just brought an additional option to my attention, which is, we could pause the regular council meeting right now, call to order the special meeting that we have on the pink sheet, and then that resolution could be adopted to extend our deadline to September 30th. Then we can set a special meeting anytime between now and September 30th to discuss the budget, if that's what the council would like to do.
Okay.
I could walk you through that if you wanted me to, too.
So that's another option, so we.
You know, if it's going to be a time saver, just pause it and let's go through this, do the extension, and then go through the special meeting, then I'm all for it, instead of waiting till the meeting ends and then we've got to do it all over again. So it's up to you guys.
Let's hear from Councilmember Mosby. He had his light on before we go anything.
I'll let you continue on. I just had a comment with Councilmember Vega's.
Okay, so is, could I get a nod that we'd like to have the Assistant City Attorney walk us through the pause?
Yes, I'm okay with the pause.
So the mayor can recess the regular council meeting.
Okay.
And then we would call to order the special meeting.
Okay. The regular city council meeting is in recess, and I am calling to order a special meeting of the city council to discuss Resolution Number 6132 (17). Roll call.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present.
Mayor Bob Lingle?
Yes, here. Okay, we do not need oral communication. Yes, we do, we need oral communication on this. So we'll put up oral communication. You have three minutes to speak to us on this item. This item for clarification is the possibility of extending our budget discussions until September. That doesn't mean it'll take us that long, but it just gives us the ability to have additional meetings between now and the end of September. So that's what we're discussing right now. So any, if you have a thing to say, step forward, please.
My card doesn't have the right number. I urge you to adopt this resolution and extend the timeframe. I'm sure members of the public, myself included, would like to look at the material that you've been given. I had prepared remarks, but I don't want to give them regarding the budget because it may be conflicting with the information that you have. And I'm sorry, my name's Deb Andrews, Mission Hills.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Signal and rise, we're going to close oral communication, bring it back to the council. I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion, okay, and I also would make that motion to extend our timeframe for budget talks to the end of September, if that's appropriate.
That'd be the September, yeah. That's what this resolution would do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Mosby.
Give me a second.
Second, okay.
Okay, so we have motion, a second, any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, that passes four-one. Okay, I will now, I guess I'm going to adjourn. I will now adjourn this meeting, and we'll move, we will reconvene our regular council meeting.
I did want to add, we did have about 20 hard copies available that we placed out at the same time it was being distributed to you. We'll have that available on the website tomorrow morning, a copy of the budget response for, available to the public.
Okay, Councilmember Vega.
Along with the motion, I believe now that we had our recess and we went to that special, the motion there, now we can go back and set a date for our special meeting. Is that not correct, sir?
That is correct.
So I'd like to make a motion there that we set a special meeting date to discuss what was given to us by staff. The date's kind of up in the air here. I mean, do we need a week, or do I have anybody else that has some input on that?
Councilmember Mosby.
Can I just say that it's not just the stuff, material? Can we, if we have a special meeting, can we make it so we discuss the whole items of the budget, not just what was presented?
Okay, yes, yes. Let me expand on that, okay, to discuss the entire budget. Again, that will allow us to absorb the rest of this. So if you want me to set a date, I can, a proposed date, or if you guys have some input. So I'd like to say, hey, how about next Tuesday, again, same time, same place, unless that doesn't work for most of you guys, okay? If you want it on Monday or Tuesday.
I am available on Tuesday, the 22nd.
I think unless that date conflicts, or it's a holiday, is it a holiday?
No. Councilmember Mosby.
I'm good with that day.
Okay.
I'll give you a second if you need it.
Yeah, that's budget hearing holiday. I'm available.
Councilmember Osborne, are you available?
Yes.
Okay, so we will set a special meeting, a special budget meeting for August 22nd, Tuesday, August 22nd. Yes.
6:30?
Oh, 6:30, yes, right here. Okay, so, Councilmember Mosby.
If we could continue to discuss.
Of course.
Budget issues, and a couple items, a couple of things I'd come up with when I was discussing with staff, and one was the, the pages of the budget that are available online, and I'd made copies and passed them out. I think everybody has copies also, they're passed out through different commissions. But one was the page 203, which was the fleet vehicle service replacement. There's a proposed $5 million purchase there, and I guess that's down now to about 3.4 million, might be even less now. And I guess that was what was inputted in there, but if that number could be trued up, we did get a list of all the vehicles that were out there, and in some discussions and such, if some of the departments could, maybe understanding where we're going right now, maybe refine that list. I understand this list was put together, some of it was maybe back in December, so there might have been some changes that came in there. But there is this fiscal year 1719 fleet replacement, which is now down to 3.389 million dollars. And I guess that's the number that was programmed into the budget, but if we could have that maybe tuned up a little bit more for the next meeting. Likewise, if you go through the list and, on, look at this page, page 200, there's some items in there from the different utilities, and not all of them are to be incorporated. From what I gather, some of them were ideas back in December, but have been changed since there, so I mean, if there could be some true-ups on these lists. There is a water well, I guess, that isn't anticipated to be put in anymore, so that's a $1.7 million that's in the list, and if we're going to be approving this package, if the items in here are not going to be done, can they be removed from the list? That's, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
For clarity, you mentioned a couple of page numbers. Are you looking in the, is it the capital improvement program, or are you pulling those numbers out of the budget draft?
These are pages that are online, you got on the internet. I made copies and passed them out, so they're up here. It says biennial budget, fiscal year 1718, 1819.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Albro's told me that there's supplement that's apparently been added online, so we'll look at it.
Yeah, I passed it out last meeting. But anyhow, if, some of those could be trued up, because we're going to be passing this and stuff, I think it should be a little more accurate, and I know things change over six or eight months, and there's probably a couple other things, I believe, that are in there as well. There's a backhoe at wastewater, and I guess there was a question of whether they did need it or didn't need it now, and if they could continue on renting and such, so maybe they could have that trued up for next meeting. And I don't, I don't know if all the council, did everybody get that on the fleet, the fleet replacement numbers?
Yeah.
Okay, and I don't know if that made available to the public. Is it city clerk? Was this list remade available to the public, the fleet replacement, the new numbers? This list?
I don't know where that came from.
It was in our mailboxes?
That's not for me.
Okay. Well, maybe we can get it to the clerk so it can be available to the public. You know, with that, I, in our downtime that we had, we had a couple of weeks off, and I had a little opportunity to study the general fund. And if I could just discuss a little bit about the budget book, when you first look at page 160 of our budget book, and 160 of our budget book represents about 70% of the total expenses in this budget book. It's mainly our utilities, our enterprises, and except for a couple of changes here and there, there was a little over a million dollar change in solid waste and such, but we're looking, again, about 70% of our budget is pretty solid and pretty decided, and I think it's important that we understand that, that our main discussion here is one of the most volatile areas, which is our general fund, which we don't have a lot of control over, and it's the inputs that come in with different taxes, sales tax, property taxes and stuff. So I think it's important that the public understands that, that, you know, except for the airport enterprise, all these enterprises here are running solidly in the black, and I think it's important to make sure that that information gets out to the public. You know, we've kind of focused on a level of negativity and the B-word and things like that, but I think it's important to understand that over 70% of our budget is very, very solid and is in the black, and over the years, through different movements and such, raises, utility rate increases, and those areas being fiscally responsible, they are solidly in the black. I think it's important that the public understands that. But I did happen to make some graphs, I did pass, put them on the city clerk, because we did ask to see what's going on, and I have copies, I did make copies for the public. Oh, look at that. What this, the number right here represents, the general fund monthly balance, there's a statement that we get, a treasury report that we get, and what this number is posted here is, it's not by, it's by year, and what we have with our general fund monthly balance. And this kind of shows some trends where we've been moving to, from, and this is kind of solidly how we've been traveling through time. The green line, which was 2015, the orange line, which was 2016, and this is kind of where we stand in 2017. This is the zero line right here. So our general fund balance, now we do have $2 million of economic uncertainty fund, and that's the money that's sitting in this zone here, which we've been using to operate or to make sure it balances. I know there's $97 million cash on hand and a lot of other funds, but specifically, this is all from a treasury report that we get monthly, and you can see that trends have been changing, and our lines are significantly down. And if we parallel this line, hopefully we don't, but if we do parallel this line, you're looking by the month of December to be somewhere about a negative six or seven million dollars. And this is why we need to do some drastic steps, and it is a pivotal moment, as the city manager has said. There's a lot, a lot of movement. We've, if we can go to the, I can go to the next slide myself, huh? Now, this is the general fund budget itself. This is over the last, since 2001, this is how much we've been spending, which is, in talking with Mr. Wilkie today, we've been keeping up with inflation, we've had a few bumps that have gone on top of there, that we have PERS that's been stacking on the top of this. But the general fund budget has gone up from a low in '03-'05 of 42 million to what we're asking now, somewhere around 69 million now. So there has, you know, you're looking at about a 75% increase in this curve. So the budget has, the city itself has been strong, and revenues have been coming in and trying to keep up with the times. Now, this is a, this is a graph that's got a lot of numbers on it, but it's a tool that I use to see how things are going on and basically how the city is breathing, so to say, and this is the general fund receipts over expended. And when you have the red line over the blue line, the red line is the money being expended, the blue line is the revenues coming in, and when the red line's over the blue line, that means you have a deficit. In this couple, three years here, we were pretty close to staying about the same, we're behind a little bit, and when you look at these two years here, the blue line was significantly above. Now, last year, the red line, which meanings our expenses, were higher than our revenues, and we had, we had a deficit last year. We spent more than what we brought in, and this year, and I'm told that we've got some more monies coming in, and we're going to be making this up, and I guess the June statement is almost done, so we'll be getting that shortly so we can see where we're standing. There's a couple, two or three times that it trues up through there, but as you guys can see, where this is the difference, the gap, that's what we're looking at in the general fund, to try to find a way and a mechanism that we have this blue line meet the red line, which is where we're supposed to be. We're supposed to be balanced, and that's what we're working diligently at. This is a graph here that shows trends. What this is, this is a moving 12-month average, and being that the general fund, money comes in, it's lumpy in, lumpy out, as it's been said, and it is, it comes in, we have, if you look back at the other graph, you'll see we have, we have a May peak, we have a January peak, we have some more money comes in at different times. But this trend, if you see here in this, in this average, you can see where we, right around July of 15, we kind of peaked and then we started coming down in here, and this is, again, this is the account balance that we're sitting in here. When you see the trends sliding in here, you know, this is where we want to try to make some changes, and we try to get this line turning the corner and going back up. So these are just some of the tools, I just wanted to share, I know, with the staff and communicate with the staff and share with you guys, what I graphed myself to see what trends are and see how movements are, and why, I have a point of concern, and I know that the city manager's mentioned a couple of times his point of concern, but this just justify it, and again, I just share with the people out there and stuff, but maybe if Mr. Wilkie could answer a couple of questions of what's put us into this position, why we've seen these lines dropping the way they are and not getting our recoveries like we did through these other years. We've got some issues, so to say.
Well, we've definitely got one significant issue, and that's, you and I agree on that, that absent the, the CalPERS unfunded liability and the increase in the payments that we are compelled to make toward reducing and eventually eliminating that, is the gorilla, the financial gorilla in the room. Ultimately, if not for that, we'd have a different picture, because we've already begun experiencing some of those payments, and I think Mr. Wilkie can indeed address that if you'd like.
Yeah, if he could, because I know PERS is one that's, you know, that's coming around the corner, and we've, you know, the curves show that we were sitting, you know, in 2015, we were in good shape. We didn't really get the January bump that we usually get in here from the 15 to 16. We normally see a January bump, and there was some items that changed.
Mr. Mosby, before I have Brad speak to that, could you, with your pointer, highlight where June is, right there, right in the middle?
June, yes.
I just want to point that out, because that June report, which comes out June 30th each year, is, becomes for us the most critical date of the year, because that's the fiscal year end. You've laid it out on a calendar year, I understand, but I just wanted to make sure that we, at least up till this point, we've been able to stay above zero at what our auditors would consider the most critical day of the year, but your observations of the trends, nonetheless, are valuable, and appreciate that input. Mr. Wilkie, do you want to address the other parts of that?
I've been thinking, since you asked that, how to respond, because generally, as part of our audit of financial statements that we will be doing, the, our audit team will be here in October. Right now, we're preparing to get the books closed for June, which will include several, as you mentioned, several iterations of what our June balances are. So you're correct that right now, the May cash balance report is the last one we've had published. The June one that we have available, that we will have available tomorrow, is just the first draft, because there are several true-ups we have to do during closing, one of which is kind of a coincidence that this is the once-in-11-year cycle where we have 27 payrolls. we have twenty seven payrolls. The city over the last three decades have accumulated funds for each of those eleven year cycles where we have one more payroll cycle than typical and that money is held in our insurance and benefit fund. So that money will be coming back into all the funds that paid that twenty seven payroll. You can probably argue half of that will be coming back in the general fund to reimburse for that once in eleven year cycle. And next year we'll start off the cycle again to start saving money in each and every budget cycle to pay for that when it comes around again in twenty twenty eight. So that's one example of a, um, adjustment that's going to happen. And the other thing that we have to look at is, um, in audit, is to provide the auditors with variance reports and Dean Albaro does many of those, which show the variances from one year to the next and also variances between budget and actual. Because we haven't gotten the books closed yet, some of those we haven't been able, we, we can't start those until the books are closed. But that process will also show, okay, we have this dollar amount variance in revenue X, Y, Z, and we have to show why that variance is. It might be a, we have lower volumes of whatever that service is. What we expected to get from a revenue source hasn't come to fruition yet. Timing issues basically, or there are systemic issues that we have to look at. Are our fees lower than what they need to be to recover our costs? Those are all things that would be coming after the budget is adopted. One of the things we're going to be doing after the budget is adopted is to review our master fee schedule to make sure that the costs that are in there, that are supporting the fees are equal to what the costs are in the seventeen nineteen budget. We can't do that until the budget's approved. So there may be a timing issue there that what we're collecting right now are, may not be enough to cover what our actual costs are now because the costs are based on, um, basically ninety percent of them are based on salaries and benefits. Benefits change just because of the nature of laws to some extent and bargaining agreements. So while I'm not prepared to say this dollar difference is because of X, Y, and Z because frankly, there's probably several different factors that have come to show why those, at least between sixteen and seventeen, why those drops are. But I don't, I'm not prepared right now to say it's because of these programs that are over budget or these, these revenues that are under budget because there, there will be several combinations of all those that will result in what our total ending balance is. The other thing I will say is that from the auditing perspective, this is, this graph up there is all cash. So from the perspective of financial audits and the opinions that are made on our financial statements, cash is just one component. It's a very, very important component, but it's just one component of our balance sheet. So when the auditors are pining on our financial status, one of the things they look at is, um, can you pay your bills? They look at that as, from a, from a fund balance perspective. What, what do you have in, in capital at the end of the day? When you take your net assets, less your liabilities, what is your balance? So we have some things out there that are in the general fund, uh, considered assets, but they're not cash. And at the same time, we also have things that are liabilities in our books that are not, that reduce our, um, net position. So those are, it, that's one of the reasons why it takes six months to get the audits out to you. In a, in a business world, they're doing things and they turn around monthly financials in a monthly basis. For whatever reason, governments are set up to do it on an annual basis and allow, at least it allows us to do a close once a year instead of doing that every single time. Some of that is related to the lumpiness that Councilmember Mosby mentioned is if you do a, um, financial statement as of April thirtieth, that's the low of the, one, one low point of the year and it may not be meaningful for what your ongoing operational needs are for the year because the general fund is based on resources for the budget cycle. And that's the reason why we budget for the full year rather than budgeting on a quarterly basis. And it, it, it's, may sound like a cop out, but it makes it really difficult to provide an ongoing update to the council on a periodic basis, less than six months at a time because at least with the way taxes come in, they come in twice a year. So twice a year, we have financial statements that relatively are caught up. One thing that I think is interesting for property taxes, property taxes for the year come in in December and roughly late May or early June, but they're for that fiscal cycle. So you're spending money in July, August, September, October and November before you even get that cash infusion. So if you look at, if you consider the city without the resources that we have for cash management provided by our utilities, just consider how it would be if your city was wholly reliant on property taxes for your operations. Somehow you have to get from July to December before you get any cash. And so the, the, that's the good thing about having our pooled cash is that we can, um, weather those ups and downs in the general fund by relying on the cash that's collected throughout this year. We do keep it separate, which is why that graph is there showing what is in the general fund because we, we are keeping track of what's in the general fund separate from every other fund and every other fund is separate too. So, um, I think what we probably could do is look at those large line items that are coming in to the general fund. Taxes, property taxes are very, very close to what we expected. TOT, except for the, um, new hotel that's not been completed yet is very much on par. The year-over-year revenues for that is five point two percent greater than it was in the fifteen sixteen year. Sales taxes are up. The last quarter was four point two percent compared to the prior year. So the, the bulk of the major sources of income, the, the, the large quantities of income that come in once together, uh, they're all very close to where they are expected to be. It's the other, other items, the, um, building permits and planning, design projects that we would have to look at more closely that come in, in much smaller increments and it's a little bit harder to identify those, especially at this point in time. Um, when we get a large project, we get a deposit in for that project. If that, the project wasn't done by June thirtieth, we still received the full amount of the deposit, we may not have earned it all by then. So we have to defer that, which is one thing that's not on that sheet because it's a, it's a liability, basically.
And that's why we have a reserve policy as well, as you're mentioning there, you know, going back a couple paragraphs of your statement. And that's, you know, in, in this case here, when you're looking at May, June of, of fifteen, we were pretty good shape with our, with our reserve policy. And I would say currently, right now, we're not in very good shape with our reserve policy. Would that be a safe statement?
Well, except June hasn't happened yet, but that trend, if that trend continues, yes. But I don't, I can't guarantee that.
We're supposed to be having about a six million dollars in reserve.
It's, we have two different policies. One says two months, one says three months. So between sixteen and twenty five percent. And frankly, that twenty five percent that is generally out there for most entities is to weather that storm between July and December and from January to June.
So we, we, we don't really have that reserve right now.
No, but that's why I mentioned that because we use a pooled method of accounting for our cash, we're using that cash on an interim basis during the year to make sure that we are able to pay our bills.
Right, right. And then we have, there's a couple of other items like we, we talked earlier today. We, we've got a computer that was purchased that's in here that, that brings things down and then that'll be trued up because I don't, it hasn't been built up through the enterprises, I guess, because the enterprises are going to be paying sixty or seventy percent of the computer, something like that. So that number hasn't been trued up, right?
The finances, yeah.
And then we have a million dollars for the real estate that we anticipated sale and we didn't really see that, right?
That's what I consider a timing difference. It's, we have, I don't think we've seen, I know we haven't seen that full amount, but I know that there have been some sales that are pending and some that have finalized. But you're right, it's not the full million that was budgeted.
Right, and it, I think it is also important to see that is in, whenever we do have, uh, raises that we pass out, we have the ability to do that and the raises are also, um, one of the downturns in this curve too, right? That's a component in there.
Well, adds to the total expenditures that are going out the door, yes.
Right. So I mean, I think it's important to see where, where we're sitting right now with the red line and that's, you know, where we're trying to figure out how to get that red line back up where the green line was.
Ready to speak to bar graphs?
I can, yeah.
If we could go back, what, the previous slide, do you have the ability or, oh, thanks, got it. I just wanted to, one of the things I noticed on here, because bar graphs particularly are very, very visual thing and, um, particularly in, in Excel, uh, Excel usually defaults in making a graph. It takes the data and it sort of looks at what's called a relevant range. And so it's, spits out your bars based upon, uh, where you are within that relevant, relevant range. And so sometimes, uh, data that would be more consistent looks less consistent and looks like more drastic in terms of increases unless they are deliberately zero scaled. And by that I mean the, the bars start from zero down at the bottom. In this case, I think the far, the, the left, uh, column starts, is that thirty?
Yeah, thirty million, yes.
Yeah, right. So if you pictured each, I, I don't know if you have a different picture of, of this with a zero scale. Uh, do you have it on the computer here?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, if you picture everything had thirty million more, those lines, you know, the, the lines start looking a little closer together. And I think Brad can speak to, if you then also separated out, for instance, the, uh, payments to CalPERS out and do that on a zero scale, for instance, the last two cycles, the one that's proposed in the most recent budget, those, uh, general fund budget numbers actually on, on the bar graph end up being just about the same, but.
Yep. I didn't have a lot of opportunity to review the graphs that were up there, but I did have historical information on how much the city's general fund and utilities have been paying for the city's share of contributions to CalPERS, which have influenced this particular graph. And I did have one that just, one of the presentations made in May was how much more we're going to, going to be paying for CalPERS in the next fifteen years. That's actually been something that's been going on since the two thousand one, two thousand three budget cycle. So I, I had done previously for other, two or three years ago to show what that increase has been and, and kind of overlaid it on top of this particular graph. So if you can pull that up. So this is the same graph that Mr. Mosby, Councilmember Mosby, uh, put together and the orangish, rust colored at the top are the city's CalPERS obligations for those particular budget cycles. Back in nineteen ninety-nine is when the city implemented, um, the three at fifty plan for public safety. So before, so, and that was back in the day when the markets were going crazy and so our contributions to CalPERS in two thousand one, two thousand three was less than two million dollars for the whole entire year for both safety and miscellaneous within the general fund. So over time, as CalPERS has lost money and changed assumptions and saw that they weren't collected enough, um, our contribution has kind of grown over time. And it actually went down here a little bit because we renegotiated contracts with the unions to have the employees on the miscellaneous side pay their share of, um, the contributions. So it actually went down by about eight percent of salary. So then in the last couple of years is when CalPERS started their ramping up of contributions. So in the seventeen nineteen cycle, uh, the projected amount that CalPERS is going to take from us, which includes the UAL payment, which is a flat number. So it's not based on payroll anymore. We used to be able to rely on salary savings that generated pension savings because we didn't pay the salary that the pensions were based on. That's not true anymore, starting in fifteen seventeen for safety and in seventeen nineteen for both safety and miscellaneous. So in seventeen nineteen, our projection is nine point four million dollars, I believe, which is a seven point eight million dollar increase in just the CalPERS component of the general fund expenditures over that eighteen year period. And, um, Councilmember Mosby mentioned cost of living increases. If you just straight line this, it's about a three and a half percent annual growth factor. If you take out the CalPERS, it's two and a half percent. So CalPERS has added a percent every single year to our costs just because they're increasing contributions. If you look at just CalPERS itself, their annual increases averaged over the whole time is about twenty seven percent a year. So, but for that change, um, but for CalPERS, um, this, this year would actually be a little bit low, the proposed budget would actually be a little bit lower than the fifteen seventeen budget. That's not real world, that's not reality. We know we're going to start paying more and more and more to CalPERS over the next fifteen years. But it's just person's perspective. Had CalPERS had a funding perspective back in two thousand one, that was more realistic to long-term effects of the benefits that were being provided and this amount was a bit higher. We may not be having to pay that extra amount over the next fifteen years that we didn't expect to be paying. So it, it's added significantly to the cost structure and it's, it's been reducing services over the whole entire timeframe. Imagine what you could do if we had seven and a half million dollars more that was discretionary, that CalPERS wasn't asking us to pay them. So that's, that's what I added to this. It doesn't change the perspective of where we are compared to revenues, but it gives a little bit more granularity to what makes up those budget amounts.
And these, uh, this is zero scaled as opposed to, um, range, group by range, right?
If I, if I can ask a question relating, going back, I don't know if I'm going to, I don't have the key yet. I don't have the power. And that's good, I, and I'm glad you tagged on top of the bar graph. I mean, there's probably other couple of components that would be good to put in there. And when we're doing a, either quarterly or semi-annual presentation, you know, I know it's hard to diagram it that, that close, but using some of those, I think would, would, would help out a lot. I think putting that, that PERS obligation on top of that shows a lot. We hear it a lot at different lines, but, um, no, that's good, putting that on there. It helps to understand. In, in this case, going back to this with our general fund in, in our, um, I know we have an old resolution with economic uncertainty money. Are, are we, according to the resolution from nineteen ninety-four, the policy there, which is the rule, are, are we dipping into this economic uncertainty money? The two million dollars? I mean, because the way I read the resolution, you're supposed to come to council when we do that. And I think it looks to me like we are and have been using that. I know money's pooled and I, well, we've got this and that, but according to, to what I see here, we've, we've been using the economic uncertainty money for kind of like the last year. And I think, believe why the previous councils put that in there is kind of put up the warning flag going, guys, you're, you're, you're down to your last two million bucks in your general fund. Your economic uncertainty money, that's what you're operating on. And just the way I- And just the way I understand it, and the way I've read it, I mean, we're in this point. And I know February twenty-first, we did have discussion, the city manager did make comment on the twenty-first of February about what we were doing, and that we were having to use that economic uncertainty money to get through. But it's important to understand, that's the zero line, and it looks to me like we've been operating on that. Is that a correct statement, or?
From my point of view.
What me?
Mood lighting.
I mentioned the audit financials earlier, and I did that on purpose because the, for whatever reason, the June thirtieth timeframe is what is important for outside entities that are looking at our financial statements. From the perspective of governmental accounting, anything that's happening between, within a fiscal year is within that fiscal period. So if it's reconciled by the end of June, then to me, that's the time that you look at it and say, we're either at two million or not two million dollars, and we're not at June yet. So if you're looking at it from the letter of that resolution, yes, maybe it could be related to any single day of the year. But I think from a practical point of view, if you're looking at it from a period, do you look at it the day before you get your property taxes in? Or do you look at it the day you get your property taxes in? It creates a lot of uncertainty about how to manage it. Because right now, I've looked at prior budgets, and there have been a number of budgets in that timeframe, the 2001 to 2016, that the budget itself says, for budgetary purposes, we're planning on borrowing money from this particular fund to get through the year for the, and for the most part, I can't tell that we actually ever did that. The actual transaction didn't have to happen because we realized cost savings during the year. But the budgets did have some mechanism in there that says, we will borrow five hundred thousand dollars for the budget year to sustain us through whatever the reasoning was. So I think, I think the difficulty from my point of view as an accountant is, how do you take that resolution and implement it on a day-to-day basis? Is it on a annual basis? Is it on a monthly basis? Is it on a quarterly basis? Because I think there's not enough information in there that says any of that. So your interpretation that it's applicable at any point in time is probably just as valid as my point of view of saying, the most important time is probably June thirtieth. So anywhere in between there could be valid.
Okay, so then, tomorrow we're getting the report, so tomorrow we'll know if we're in the economic uncertainty using your.
Except for the fact that we have.
If we're over the zero line, then we're not using it.
Right, but keep in mind that that's the beginning of our budget, of our closing process. That's not the end of our closing process, that's the beginning of our closing process. So if that's under zero at that point in time, we'll likely have some money that's coming in to sustain the twenty-seven payroll, for instance, that's in the report that you're going to see tomorrow. But the money to pay for that twenty-seven payroll is not yet there yet. So there's still going to be some timing differences between that.
Yeah, you have a couple more true-ups, right, you have some more inputs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, if I could add, because I want to validate both these positions about how you look at when you have a negative balance fund and you have positive balance funds, exactly what is the interrelation? And it's almost like one of the possible answers to is, are we using, you know, where are we borrowing? If we're in a negative on our general, if we show a general fund as a negative number, where are we borrowing from? And it's possible to say, well, from any of the other numbers that are positive. So you could point to the reserve for economic uncertainty, and we are holding the two million dollars locked in there as you look through our dozens and dozens of fund balances. And you could point to that hypothetically and say, yeah, well, there it is, that's offsetting that amount. Or you could point to any, it's appropriate legal and ethical to point to any of the other numbers and say, well, that's where we're borrowing it. At the end of the day, what really happens is, we have earnings out of our investment fund, and based upon each fund, if I've got this right, each fund's average daily balance, they're having earnings attributed, which means to each one, it's being per-rated and attributed based upon average daily balances. So if you have a fund that on average stays in the minus, it has to pay, if you will, the interest that's equivalent to what the market pool is earning to all other positive balances. So if you really wanted to get technical, you'd say, when you see a minus, it is actually borrowing on a per-rated basis across every positive fund that's out there. So I think it's correct to say that, or it's correct if you want to point and say, well, listen, the two million dollar economic uncertainty fund is the general fund, fund number ten, and the current minus number on your, at the bottom of your graph is general fund number ten. If you wanted to group the fund, those fund line items that are ten together, I think that's appropriate. If that's the view you want to take. But mechanically, really, what happens is, if you go minus for a period of time, you are borrowing basically a few pennies or a few dollars from every positive fund.
What I'm getting at is, I believe, through this resolution in ninety-four, is actually to finances' advantage to let us know that we're dipping in there, guys, and that we can be ever mindful that we need to make some changes. And that's what I'm getting at here, when I'm putting these trend lines together, and that's why I'm bringing it up now, I'm putting them together. When you look at the curves and what's going on right here, you know, we don't want to see the 2018 line to below the 2017 line. Because if you see the parallel trends from green to orange to red.
I understand.
That's what I'm getting, I want to.
I'm in agreement with you because I've offered up my thoughts on a number of ways we can help make sure that that happens, right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Public comment, budget. I'm sure you, everyone understood exactly what we were talking about there.
I'm Bob Holloway, I'm the chairman of the Utility Commission. Last night, we had a meeting, and we voted on a couple of things. After extended discussion, the Utility Commission hereby opposes any utility tax use, and it was three to one, and there's one vacancy. Now, the Utility Commission motion of eight fourteen, two thousand seventeen, after discussion with staff from the utilities, the Utility Commission has concluded that the following items listed on the capital improvement plan should be removed by the council prior to approving the budget. The council has directed on numerous occasions that the replacement of water mains, wastewater lines, both above and below ground electric lines are the priority of the city and the Utility Commission. All of these items below are removed from the capital improvement plan, will free funds for the council priorities, and reduce the need for future rate increases. I have a copy of all of them, but I'll go ahead and read them off here. The water utility and the treatment plant, the treatment basin upgrades, they can, they don't have to do them right now, so that frees up a million dollars. The reserve mixing unit on the basins is fifty thousand dollars, they don't need that. And the reservoir chlorination project, they said they don't need that right now, so that's sixty-five thousand dollars. The water utility stormwater trash interceptor is seventy thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, they don't need that. And then the water utility source of supply, we had to skip well ten and go to well eleven, which is in operation now, but you have it down here for one point seven million dollars. So that's a total, just for the water department, of three million six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents, or two hundred and twenty-three dollars that we can use to take care of infrastructure. And then the wastewater utility maintenance, they say that they don't really need a backhoe, and that's a hundred sixty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And the treatment, they, the filter press was three hundred thousand dollars, and so that comes to a total of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So you're talking a little over four point two million dollars that we can save right there off of the budget. So that was passed by three to one, and there was one vacancy. So I wanted to get them before you guys, before you did the budget hearing, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Evening, Mayor, City Council, fellow citizens of Lompoc. I'm sitting here tonight, I'm hearing all this back and forth, and on one hand, we got one guy saying, hey, we're bankrupt. On the other hand, we've got people saying, no, wait a minute, we're not bankrupt. We've got all this money here that we're not really counting yet, and it's pretty soon we're going to count it, but it's going to have to be next month. You know, I ran a business for over thirty years, never seen anything like this in my life. If I was an IRS agent, you'd be getting an audit. Number two, I'd like to call for an audit, a forensic audit. There seems to be a lot of confusion about what this hand's doing and what this hand's doing. And real simply, I'd like to have a freeze, freeze on salaries and hiring, with the exception of the police. A total freeze. No more, I'm going to hire this guy, I need an assistant here, they need an assistant there. No, a freeze, until we iron out where these financial problems really are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment. And let's see, there's no action needed on this item, so we are.
Can I just make one more comment on a couple resolutions that I'm asked?
Go ahead.
Asked for the city clerk to pass out, and I guess there's copies out in the area there, and that's fifty-nine oh-two, parentheses, fourteen, which Mayor Lingle, you voted for as well, to pass and approve on here. And it's a policy with principles, and there's sixteen principles in here that we're to put on and to analyze. And D three, I think, is one of very important, there's a number, they're all important in here, but it says, no city service or function should be exempt from evaluation. And I think it's important to understand that that's kind of where my twelve-point plan was looking at, and I know that there's others out there. I'm not an expert in analyzing what's going on behind there, what I looked at. And if staff could bring, understanding what council's looking for, if staff could, looking at these principles, the policy out here, if they could go through and see if there's something they could enhance, and help us try to do what we're trying to do. It shouldn't be put upon our shoulders. I think you see the direction, at least three of us want to move down. And if staff could assist with that, and by the next Tuesday meeting, it'd be greatly appreciated. You guys are mindful what's going on back there. And there is also the other resolution, fifty-nine thirteen fourteen, which is our operating reserve goals for the general fund, and the mechanism that seems like we've been missing out on. And not blaming anybody, not putting the blame gate out there, but I think we need to make some corrective changes, and I think those graphs that I had at their show. But we need to remember that these policies are passed, they become the rule. And I dug deep to find this, going back, these, I believe, should have been presented to us. If they're going to be changed, so be it. But this is the rule that we're operating on, and when the budget was presented, it'd been nice if they'd been in front of us so they could see the mechanisms we have to operate with, and that we can all operate with. Again, I'm not pointing fingers out there, but if we could get together, work together, and come towards a common goal to what we're looking at doing. You guys have a lot more information than I am available to find. You know that the positions that are open right now, you know what we can do, we know what we need to do. And if you guys could work with us, we come back next Tuesday, not only with the twelve points here, but other items that be put on the table, I would, no, I would greatly appreciate it. I don't know, I don't believe I need to make a formal request and get two others, I think we have that. So we can get toward this goal, and let's try to power through this so we can be done with this by the end of this month. I know there's a lot of people out there that are sitting on the edge of their seat wondering, am I going to have a job tomorrow or stuff? And if you read, and city staff as well, you know, read what it says in here, what this resolution says in here. It's important to understand, it's, number seven, D seven, says council shall commit to support employees during the transition, and insist those who may be adversely impacted. And we want to do that, I mean, that's, so we can pass that out as well, make sure the staffs understand, because I know that they are out there. We could get things done, because I know Dean Albro's pulling his hair out, he's wanting to get chomping on these numbers and get his audit report done. So just under a request, if we could try to work together and get back shifted in this direction, and we could get this done ASAP.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, we're going to move on to item number nine. Approval of either an agreement with Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau to extend the existing agreement for sixty days, or to extend for sixty days.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Teresa Galavan, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Manager. And this item is to extend the chamber contract for the next sixty days while we continue to go through budget deliberations. So recommend that you go ahead and authorize a city manager to execute amendment number two, to extend the agreement to allow them nine thousand dollars a month for the work they do as our partner. Thank you.
Any questions from Ms. Galavan? Councilmember Starbuck.
Ms. Galavan, how did it wind up that the chamber has singled out here? We, is it a council decision that I missed out on, that we were going to just do the chamber? We were going to talk about crossing guards, we were talking about museum, we were talking about all these other subordinate agents, you know, that.
Sure, those, all of those are being discussed in the overall budget. But in order to keep, it has been, we've been bringing this to you because it is a contract separate from the other types of support. This one actually has a contract that would have terminated, so council did a two-month extension.
So this was the only one that had the contract, then?
And the county animal control services was the other one.
Okay, so the museum and everybody else then was not contracted.
Anything else? Thank you. Public comment. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. What's your desire? Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I'd like to go along with staff's recommendation because of the budget concept and the fact that the chamber is involved with, and the minimum requirements with economic development. And I think that we're going through the process here, and we don't have it resolved. I think that we should move forward with staff's recommendation that we at least go and move forward with sixty days, which would fund them for sixty days while we get through this budget process, and then we can go to the next step.
Okay, so that would be item number B then, or two, yeah, B two, yeah. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Sixty days, okay. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second and discussion.
I just wanted to throw out, I'm going to support this, but, you know, I'd sure like to see option one eventually go through so that the chamber is at least able to move forward with some of their things instead of two months, two months, two months. So hopefully, this will be the last time we do this.
Councilmember Vega.
I do have a comment to Mr. Starbuck. If you look at the budget that we're dealing with, and you look at the economic development aspect of the chamber minimum requirements, that we're holding them and we're adhering them to, depending on what we do here with, and the consensus for the budget, economic development is also impacted here. So I think that if we take the time and we do it correctly so that we're referencing all aspects of the minimum requirements that's required by the chamber in order for them to stay in compliance with the city, since it is money that the city's giving them, I think that we should look at that just like we do the budget.
I'll just make a comment. I'll just make a comment return. $90,000 is a bargain. We couldn't afford to do it in the city for that.
Okay.
I'm good. I'd like to, maybe we can vote on this?
Yeah. Any other discussion? Okay, then let's vote. That passes 5-0. Okay. That takes us to written communications. No, after written communications.
Nothing.
No written communications. Okay, now we'll go back to item number three. And who wants to handle item number three?
I'll handle that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the short delay and allowing me to find and review this section. Section 5D of the contract is what Councilmember Mosby was asking about, and yes, it would, if we were entered into this contract tonight, it would tie the city's hands in a way, because it would prevent, as long as the county issues to us the money that they're agreeing to under this contract, which is, it looks to be $493,000 for library services, that section that Councilmember Mosby asked about says that the city cannot unilaterally change the level of hours of operations or staffing of the libraries without first consulting the county community services director and presenting the change to the library advisory committee for input. So we wouldn't be able to unilaterally reduce library services, but we'd have to consult with the county first.
Councilmember Mosby.
What was the time sensitivity?
I believe they said next Tuesday, the county is considering this. I will say, if it helps, that the agreement requires us only to consult with the county and to ask for the county's input. It does not necessarily say that the county has the absolute authority to stop us from reducing services. And so I believe Mr. Wilkie informed me earlier that when Sunday service was reduced in the past, that the exact same provision was in the contract. We consulted with the county and still went forward with reducing the Sunday service.
Okay. Any other discussion?
What did they say when, I think it was in 2009 when they reduced the Sunday service? What was their consultation? What did it...
Unfortunately, all I know is that that happened. The librarian that was in place at that point in time was the one that was taking that to the commission, so I don't know what transpired, but I know that we did reduce those hours, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All entertaining?
I do have a question, sir. If you, like, Mr. Mosby asked that question, you didn't want anything really tied to their budget decision process. We're up against a time crunch, and what's the negative fiscal impact again? If you could possibly repeat that, Brad, what the negative fiscal impact would be for us not to be included in this county-wide library system?
If we decide not to be in the system at all, I think there's an exit provision that is part of the agreement that we would have to implement. And anecdotally, I don't know what those are, but I know that the city of Galita has been entertaining that for some time, and they've been having discussions on it for many months, and they finally decided to go with, I believe they decided to go with the contract as it is, looking to maybe exit the program later. But I think trying to exit it now, that we're already two months into the fiscal year, would be, there's a chance we would not get any of their funding whatsoever.
Thank you.
Which is about $493,000.
If I may, Mayor, I'm willing to go on the city attorney's response and Mr. Wilkie's response as well, that it's merely a consultation, and in the past, they've been able to work with us, so I'm okay with that. So thank you, guys, for answering the question. I would be, without any further discussion, I'd be willing to make the motion to move forward.
I'd like to make one more comment also. I think that possibly, when we ask these questions with their budgetary, this is pretty serious, these are serious items, I think that, I kind of think that every time we ask a question, and I appreciate your comment to the city attorney, that we're taking him on what is evaluation, what is the situation, but I think we should always end it with some sort of consensus. Otherwise, we're just asking a question, leaving it open-ended. So I do appreciate the fact that the city attorney did answer that question to a point where we feel that we do have some sort of ability to bring this thing back if we needed to.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes on any item that can be brought before this council. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication. And we have council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
No meeting reports, but I'd like to remind everybody, we have the final weekend of Old Town Fair this week, Police Cruise Night, I'll be working the booth, and I would encourage the public to come out and see and support our public safety officers. Appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Rosburn.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Mosby.
I did represent the city of Lompoc at the subregional San Barbara County Association Governance Meeting last week.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports, but one question. Last meeting, we had talked about sending a letter supporting Lega City's position on the Senate Bill 35 on the preempt local discretionary land use authority. Have we moved on that? Because I remember there was a copy supposed to be delivered into our box, and I have not received one, I'm sure no one on the council, but are we actively writing this letter, or do we just forget?
I spoke with the city attorney's office last week about that, and they are looking at a couple other bits of legislation, so they are keeping an eye on it and waiting for a little more information to finish that letter.
Thank you.
Okay, and I attended many meetings, none at city expenses. And with that, let me put my glasses back on. This council is adjourned to our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, September 5th. Good night.